Seven o'clock, so I'll call this meeting of the Board of Alderman to the order. Roll call please, Heather.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Madley.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
Here.
Alderman Borath, here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
All right, we have quorum standing, official business can't take place. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, should make your packet. Any questions?
Evening, Alan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
The motion and second to approve the consent agenda is written, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much. Council table over twelve fifty. Page twenty-eight. Capital paving and construction, is that for the overlays that we did this year?
Yeah. Giving about twenty, about thirty thousand under college under global question.
Motion to approve the council table.
Sorry.
Have a motion and second to approve council table in amount of six hundred and fifty, a thousand one hundred eighty dollars and ninety-nine cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. All right, this time I'll open the floor for comments from citizens. If you have a comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and make comments.
Hi, my name's Dennis Cook. I live at one ninety-three Harburg Drive here in Centrae. The reason I'm here is about the new rules on the trash pickup. I'm concerned about trash being left about because the new rules on, everything has to be bagged, so I assume that they will not pick up any loose items such as a tuba fours or something like that. The, or at least it wasn't mentioned, it just said everything had to be bagged. That's something I could probably go with personally, but there's a lot of elderly people living in this town, and they don't have the same resources like going down to Columbia and hauling it off. Or otherwise, they may have paid someone a hundred dollars to have them pick up stuff and take it down there. Because I had twenty, twenty-two or twenty-four dollars minimum charge down the landfill in Columbia. That's what's been in the past for a thousand pounds. The people, just the older people, don't have the resources and ability to do things like, you know, I guess I'm older, but I'm still able to do things.
Yeah.
But anyway, that being said, for the ones that don't have the ability to haul things off and they won't pick it up, the other morning was a good example. A lady put out three trash bags out front yard and laid a tomato cage on top of it. They did not pick the trash up. So I don't know if it was because there was a tomato cage laying on top of the trash bags or what it was, I'm just not sure.
They didn't pick the trash up? They didn't pick any of the trash up?
None of it.
My guess is it wasn't.
They picked mine up, I had two bags out, they picked it up.
My guess is it wasn't out on time, there's nothing there that they didn't pick up.
I was there when the truck went by.
Well, there's, there's nothing there that they shouldn't have picked up.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I was outside.
Unless there's something else that was out there.
I picked trash up and I just went right on by it, so.
What was he at?
Couple doors down. Yeah, couple doors down. But anyway.
What you described they should have picked up.
Pardon me?
What you've described they should have picked up.
I'm sorry.
What you have just described they should have collected.
Yeah, well, that's what I would have thought, but see, I didn't know all the rules.
There's no rule against any of that stuff.
Is it still there?
No, no, I assume they took it back in the house, or maybe they come by and picked it up, I don't know. I mean, I've been late, you know, setting my trash down before, because sometimes before they would come at five minutes or seven, and they'd say have it out at seven o'clock, and it'd be there five minutes or seven, sometimes it would be noon. So you'd have to have an immediate balance without having the dogs come through there and ripping the trash open.
Right.
So, you know, I just took it back in and held it off next week, which got, I had double amount of trash for the next week. So, but my other concern is, is what are people gonna do with this extra trash if they can't? Are they gonna put it in the backyard or front yard? Some places here in town have it on their front doorstep and all over the front yard and everything else. So, you know, taking a nice clean community and just making it worse. The other thing is, was brought to my attention is the possibility of not having spring cleanup. The ability to haul stuff over here, because a lot of people have yard sales.
I think we're still gonna have that, that's our plan.
Oh, well, I talked to somebody in the city, up here at the city office today, and it was their understanding that it probably wouldn't happen, they didn't say it wouldn't, they just said it probably wouldn't happen.
I think we're just, we're just gonna have one. Which was what we've done for several years.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine, you know, because a lot of people have yard sales and they take the stuff what they don't sell. And I also, because, you know, I've had stuff. So, but that was my other concern, you know, so.
Well, we'll, we'll talk to Dane and kind of clear that confusion up. There, there isn't a specific, what the city was doing before Dane started, started this contract, was, was, we passed an ordinance that limited you to two ninety-six gallons, gallon carts worth of trash, whether that was actually in two carts or not. Because we had people, there were, several, more than one of the trash haulers mentioned that people were bringing trash in from out in the country and in, and, and. Abusing our system. Right, right.
Yeah, I understand that part.
So, so then, and then if you had more than that, the city had been billing five dollars for excess trash. As long as it's, as long as you're putting out household trash, Dane isn't gonna be very, as, as long as it's trash from that household, that limit is not, you, that, that limit, you can at least give that, you, you'd be fine with that limit and possibly slightly more. You also can set out one bulky item every week for no additional trash.
When you say bulky, you mean like a can, a tray, or appliance item?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that part I read and I understood that, that I, you know, chance we have something like that, it's probably slimmed down, but it will happen, I'm sure.
If you have, if you, if you're doing a construction project, you, you probably need, if you're, if you're just talking about a couple of, if you're talking about one patch on a drywall and you can get it into some sort of container, even, you know, it's something where you can pick it up and you can bag it, that's the best thing. If you've got loose lumber like that, you can tie it to a bundle, they'll take it.
So they will take a tied bundle then?
As long as it's, I think, I can't remember, there's a, there's a, there's a length, and it has to do with getting it in the back of the truck. And I can't remember if it's four feet or five feet, but as long as they can get in the back of the truck. They've got, when we talked to Montgomery City, their quote about Dane's trash was hire them even if they're not the lowest bid. And, and they've been serving this communities of Mexico and Hallsville for some time. Their goal is to pick up all the trash, as long as people aren't abusing the system.
I used to live in Hallsville and they picked up everything, I mean, they, there was no, I, I'm sure they, and there was, you know, tried to tip the guys for that, but it worked.
There's, there, and that's the attitude they have here. We just don't want to encourage the people who have been abusing the system for years. Because, because we were, we were getting pile, piles that wouldn't, would barely fit in the front yard, you know, one width of the front yard, not all the way back in the house, but, and so we were, we were already trying to address that issue before we looked out for contract. We also, and one of the things we're trying to do that is gonna help everybody, including the older people, is this, a contractor will allow us to reduce the residential trash rate. Now, there are some commercial, there are, if some, very, a few very small, there's a few commercial rates that might go up slightly in April, but the, the commercial rates are gonna stay the same unless you're getting larger containers, et cetera, et cetera. And some track, some commercial customers will probably cut their costs. But there are, but I, the specific case about them passing that house up, I don't know. It's possible that it was behind a car and they missed it, I don't know. I mean, but they, there's, if you have like a wire cage, their, their big thing is, just, so they, what they want to do with the bags inside the ninety-six gallon carts is grab them and keep up.
Right.
So, we, we played along with that and it's upset some people. But, you know, small, there, there are some other options that we can work with individuals. And smaller containers, they don't mind picking up those and tossing them in the system. We built our system around these ninety-six gallon carts which we sold to people. And now those people, it, it, those, those people who bought the ninety-six gallon carts are the one people, are the one set of people that they raised sympathy for, because they shelled out seventy dollars and they used to throw a little bit of loose trash in it. And if you're tipping it with it, if you're tipping it with a tipper, that works pretty well, unless you've got something like Walmart bags without, you know, or Styrofoam or something that blows away when you tip it. But, but, yeah, we'd like to see, but we'll, with individual cases, we'll work as well as we can to.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't know, because when it said in there, you know, it had to be in trash bags, so that pretty much limited anything outside of the trash bags, so that was my big concern. Because everybody, I mean, I, probably without exception, is gonna have something that won't fit in a trash bag unless they got a high salt or, or salt, or salt woodrake or something, you know, so it's gonna.
Well, his, the instructions he gave us, the trick is to try and give people information without overloading them with exceptions. So, but, but that's a good question, we'll review our material we sent out and try and, and try and address those situations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
My name is Monica Horton and I live on Reed Street, and I'm here for the residents of Sunset Garden Senior Housing. I'm the assistant manager there. We have seventy-one residents out there, and they are very concerned about the trash pickup. And the, the truck came last week at quarter till four, it came yesterday at quarter after four. These are old people and they're being, and they're not very happy about it. I, we went around last week and tried to see what was left in the dumpsters. We have twenty poly carts. And they picked up the bags that they left, they broke the cardboard boxes down and they left them in, in the dumpsters. And another, this problem that we're having is with the recycling. We have stopped recycling at Sunset Gardens because we cannot abide by the rules that Dane's has had. So we're wanting to know what these people did with the recyclings. Is there going to be a dumpster somewhere that these people can go? This week, they put everything in their trash, and then it's going to come up to the fact that we have too many items in our trash, and then what are we gonna do with it?
The, the, the two, too many items in the trash is not an issue. I mean, you can, as long as you can, as long as you can get in a bag and get it out into the, the carts. The ninety-six gallon carts, you guys have those, those low profile.
Poly carts that we purchased from the city.
Yeah, the little, the shorter ones.
Yes.
We could save you money if you could work with, with, we've talked. If you could work with dumpster, dumpsters, you could save money. But you've explained to me why that doesn't.
There's just absolutely no way, because we have eighty and ninety-year-old residents out there, and some of them aren't even tall enough to reach a big dumpster.
Right.
So, but our concern is, you know, if the dumpsters get full, then what are we going to do with the excess?
What do you do with the excess when the ninety-six gallon carts get full?
When the poly carts are full and they can't put anything else in them, where do they put their trash?
What do you do now?
We don't have any problem with them being overflowed, but if they start putting recycling in there, they're going to be.
They don't take cardboard?
We, we've never taken cardboard.
What they're doing, what they're doing is smashing the cardboard boxes down, emptying the thing and then throwing it back in the trash and rolling it back. They're not taking, moving in the trash.
That, I don't know why they do that, I'll talk to them about that. Maybe they think they're trying to help, maybe, I, I'm not sure why they're doing that, that's the first I've heard that. There's no reason why they can't take part in the trash.
We called to the city, Tony and I, for a month about this. And, you know, our residents want to recycle, but we don't have the ability to be able to do that with them.
You have a, you have drop-off bins down, right?
Pardon me?
You have like, you have little bins that sort your.
We have those, but the city gave us all those. And then we went and bought, they're about this tall, and they're full every other week. Well, we cleaned them up last week because.
I, I think we can come up with, I mean, the, the only difference is you don't have to use as many sorts. Now, he, right now he's going to the handy shop with his material. The handy shop doesn't like loose material.
No, we're, we're throwing, we threw them away.
No, the, the hauler.
Oh, I see.
Takes the materials to the handy shop. The handy shop does not like to deal with the loose material, because when you pour it, when they dump it on the floor, it's, it's hard for them to work with. So that's why they've been asking for bag material. There's a couple of different options, and one of those is if we work with the city of Columbia, because they're not as concerned about that. So we'll, we'll look at different options.
Okay, we would appreciate it, because a lot of our seniors out there do recycle and they're all upset now that they can recycle, and we're going backwards.
We also are keeping the trailer at the, the street park.
Oh, okay.
So if somebody has the, where we call to carry it there, you can continue doing the recycling, as you've always done it, and separating them out and bring it there, but.
So the residents can take them out there?
They can take them out there, but they're all, but that's all sorted by each container, by each type. And the other thing is that the, the handy shop doesn't take glass, if we, if we, but Columbia will. So, I mean, we've been taking our recyclables to Columbia for several months now, because they take all of the things that we collect. The handy shop has tried to do glass in the past, it's a consult or shelter workshop, and they just don't have, it's too dangerous because they do a lot of hand sorting, and so they have, I, I know way too much about this because I've worked with salt waste district for seven years. But, so they, so they haven't been able to find a way to do glass recycling. But we'll continue to work with Dane to make sure that, because the recycling program is near and dear to my heart, because that's.
Right, and it, you know, and we, we are so acclimated to doing recycling, and now we're going backwards. But glass is not a problem out there, there's very low glass collected out there.
Is there, well, talk to me tomorrow, I should have, we've had enough other things to take care of. I would like to work with you to restore recycling.
Okay, I would appreciate it.
Especially, I mean, if you can put the recyclables in bags in your carts, we could, we could take, that would be not a problem for a handy shop. As long as they're working with a handy shop, the other possibility is maybe we could just tell him, he's, he's willing to take it to Columbia, but.
But then if there's sixty-eight people out there, and sixty-eight people recycle, all they're going to have is small bags, and then I'm going to take those, right?
That's, that's different for recycling and, besides your, the bins you're using are pretty small. So, that might, we might be able to work with that, so.
I think they're like, we bought the larger ones, and I had to like ten or fifteen gallon bins, and we had the labeled plastic whatever.
Right, right, yeah, and, that, the program was set up when we were working with a different vendor, for, for a different processor for recycling. That processor has gone out of business, well, no, they, they haven't gone out of business, but they have, they were not taking materials for some time, and we had to make some adjustments to our program until they got their program back up and running. Although, I don't know, I'm not sure, they're, they're.
But I would appreciate the city working with us.
I would, I'd be happy to do that, and I know we talked and I didn't have a good answer for you.
We talked about everybody in the city, in the city office.
And I'd like to show you the, the height of, there, there may be an option where, there are some dumpsters that, I'll, I'll talk to Dane's, because if we could get, that would make, I think we could reduce your trash a little if we did that.
Would they get trash clear at the back of them buildings?
Yes, they, we had.
So they, they have to drive back in there?
They're in, in between buildings.
In between buildings, and then all the cars park up front and their trash is back there. The dumpster wouldn't work out there. They were loaded, they're unloaded.
They have these, they have the same in, in Mexico.
Right.
So I know what they do there.
Right.
I mean, it's got, we're there and work here, and we do that sometimes.
You know, our layout is, is.
So, so you don't have, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, and you, and every, every resident out there is capable of walking to their, I mean, there's, there's no one, well, you know, we'll, we'll talk.
There's some that are not capable of walking very far. Yeah, but we need to do something.
We need to figure out what time they're starting.
Yeah.
They start at twelve-thirty at the nursing home across from my house.
Right.
And that's ridiculous. They woke everybody up in the neighborhood, my phone rang from twelve-thirty to one-thirty.
My phone's got a lot of ringing the last.
Yeah, I mean, twelve-thirty, that's, they're supposed to start residents at five.
Yeah.
And they were gonna start just a little bit before five on commercial.
Right.
They were starting at one at commercial.
Well, they said, well, they.
They, they told us a little bit before five, is what they told us.
So they could hit the reci, the residential at five, and then later a little bit before was moved forward, and I was, I was hoping that was just, once they get, once it started out, to make sure they get everybody, and they'd be more efficient.
I mean, we beat them dumpsters over at nursing homes, three apiece, six times, two dumpsters, woke everybody up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Bill? All right, closed comments for citizens. A report from the Chamber of Commerce, there's a report in your packet. Trying to do a community garden behind Heritage Hall.
Say that the Anchor City cook-off went well, long participation. Did we have forty, they had, not many, they, forty different teams. Thirty-four. Oh, she said forty.
Yes, and then there were six backyards on the field.
They had a lot of kids in it?
There were eleven total.
That's pretty good.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
Can they have somebody up there can sell barbecue? Old friend up there, the only place, the only place I found was Pringer's, and they was out.
Well, and, yeah, that, that was the one place that, that, the, the individual barbecue company.
When were they out? About, this was about one or two in the afternoon. They had pork, but I don't eat pork, so they, but the brisket, no one ever ordered.
We'll try to address that for next year.
Oh, I, yeah, maybe more people come to you looking.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else for the chamber? How did the Luke Bryan contract go Friday night? You know, how many people were, they had?
There was a lot.
A lot.
I bet there was over twenty thousand.
Yeah, I heard, I heard it was going down. That was fun.
I'm sorry I missed it, you know, it's, stuff will bring children through, so. All right. Action Agenda, Finance, Informants and Licensing, nothing scheduled, that's the story.
Yep.
Okay. Legal. Authorizing compensation for certain city employees, this is ordinance requires two readings. And this is, uh, ordinance that was redone, so. Alderman Borath, could you introduce us a little bit?
Yeah, bill number twenty-one, twenty-two. I live at bill number twenty-one, twenty-two, be given its first reading by title only.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-one, twenty-two be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Post, continue please.
I have a bill to create ordinance entitled, an ordinance to fix the compensation of certain employees of the cities in Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-two be given its second reading by title only.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-one, twenty-two be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Post, continue please.
An ordinance to fix the compensation of certain employees of the cities in Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-two be adopted by roll call vote.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to bill number twenty-one, twenty-two be adopted by roll call vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, roll call vote, please, Heather.
Alderman Madley.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Alderman Borath.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-one, twenty-two passes, now becomes ordinance, ordinance number.
Twenty-eight, seventy.
Next, we have authorizing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centrae, Missouri to enter into agreement with the Thompson Law Center LLC of Columbia, Missouri for legal services for two thousand five hundred dollars and no cents per month, plus additional expenses as specified. This is also an ordinance, requires two readings. Do you have anything on the city attorney, or do you have any questions?
Charles Thompson from the Thompson Law Center is here, it's a two-member firm, essentially him and his father Randall, they were the selection of the committee. This would be officially adopting an ordinance to enact that, and then they would be our interim city attorney until such time as we go through a process to hire a, a permanent city attorney. One of the things to look at is, if we need to change our ordinance to have a contract city attorney, it is, suggests that the city attorney is an employee. So if we want to have a, an option for either or, we need to make sure that that's okay, and then we'll work that process.
Alderman, would you introduce us a little bit?
Yes.
Name, please.
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
I move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-three be given its first reading by title only.
Sorry.
Another motion and a second to bill number twenty-one, twenty-three be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, continue please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centrae, Missouri to enter into an agreement with the Thompson Law Center to serve as special counsel to the city of Centrae, Missouri to handle general legal matters in the role of temporary city attorney as needed for the city of Centrae, Missouri, and, and setting the rate of compensation for said special legal counsel. I move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-three be given its second reading by title only.
Another motion and a second to bill number twenty-one, twenty-three be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, continue please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centrae, Missouri to enter into an agreement with the Thompson Law Center to serve as special counsel to the city of Centrae, Missouri to handle general legal matters in the role of temporary city attorney as needed for the city of Centrae, Missouri, and setting the rate of compensation for said special legal counsel. I move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-three be adopted by roll call vote.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to bill number twenty-one, twenty-three be adopted by roll call vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, roll call vote, please, Heather.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Alderman Borath.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Madley.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-one, twenty-three passes, now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-eight, seventy.
All right, purchasing. Approving payments of progress invoice number eight from MECO Engineering, pay app number four for B and P Patterson for a construction engineering phase of low dot TAP ninety-nine hundred five ninety-nine, the Jefferson Street stop-up project. Do you have a motion?
Don Jenkins is here from MECO Engineering, the project is nearing completion. Don Jenkins is here from Meco Engineering. The project is nearing completion. Uh, we're looking at a, we did a semi-final walkthrough today. Um, there were a couple of, made a short punch list. This, Don will give you detail for this. These are the last major payments to B and P Patterson for seventy-four thousand dollars. Uh, my.
There's twenty-four thousand left in the project left, so we believe most of that's already been completed. We just have to get it into a application.
And then there's a few, I'm not gonna say, but it's, it's a small amount left to get, to pay Meco. So, the vast majority of the project has, has been, has been completed and paid.
Our construction inspection part of it's very, there's not much left in it at all and then anything else over top of that is no charge.
And there is one last issue basically that we settled today in front of the McGuire driveway. The house is set back and there's a driveway that comes to the house. They had an asphalt driveway and the driveway was level enough that when they, that they, it would not have required, uh, we would have been able to just build a concrete sideways sidewalk up to one side and off to the other side. During the process of the cutting for the, um, putting in the stormwater across the driveway, they cut basically halfway into the asphalt. So, the one little, no, cut halfway to where the path for the sidewalk.
Anywhere we cross the driveway, if it doesn't meet a two percent crosswalk, we have to take it out, put it in sidewalk and then report the approach to match up to it.
Um, anytime it'll meet, we, we don't do it because it saves, you know, roughly five, seven thousand dollars per driveway to come back from that.
The driveway itself is in pretty rough condition as far as falling apart deteriorating. When they went and did the stormwater through there, it all kind of broke out kind of into where the sidewalk would go through if we continued it. Um, to have a patch come back in the middle of the sidewalk, I don't think we'll have that approved through Logot. I don't think they'll allow that with their eighty-eight compliance. Um, after talking with the contractor today, instead of putting an asphalt patch for the approach where the stormwater, they agreed to pay the difference and put in concrete for the approach. It's roughly thirteen foot from the back of the road. They'll do about eight and a half foot of it on their change against concrete and they'll take that. If the city will pay for the sidewalk to go through the sidewalk, then it should match up with it.
And actually, the homeowner agreed because they would rather have a nice smooth concrete sidewalk all the way through to, well, he's agreeing concept to participate in some small fashion. So, the cities with the net change orders that would have been to our benefit, we're looking at, after all said and done.
Right now before this, I'm, like I told you last time, I thought they'd be a wash. I'm at negative seven hundred and some dollars, so they were about at a wash. But now they'll add this in. Um, the materials for the sidewalk, it's about forty-five foot of sidewalk, it's roughly eighteen hundred dollars. Um, the only cost that I don't have already in the project as a unit price is the removal. The contractor will give me that and we'll negotiate that to get that down to a price. Um, I think there's a couple of other things we're gonna bring back out in the change order, so at the end of it, I'm looking around a thousand dollars for the next change order to come through.
And that would be for continuous concrete sidewalk instead of, what the, what the original plan was to leave that asphalt because it was not a, we didn't need to get into it.
See, we came and surveyed the whole thing and wasn't inspected and all that. Now it's kind of crumbling, it kind of broke down into it. Instead of having a patch in the middle of the driveway, we'd have to go to the back of the sidewalk now.
Putting perspective, the whole project's around two hundred and forty thousand dollars with engineering and everything.
All right.
And this, what I have today is the payout for seventy-four thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars eighty-five cents for the concrete right here. Six copies assigned again for that.
Again, again.
And that's all in the packet we got.
Okay. Uh, I do want to say that I have been running out there and very morning hours and, uh, very nice, very nice project.
I talked to several homeowners today and they're all really pleased with the progress and they love not having the ditch in front of their house and.
Right.
We got all the side put in, in the house today. We had everything seeded and mulched today. Um, we've bored the asphalt on Emerald Drive. The only thing left is that driveway and then the signs for the crosswalks.
And do they paint all parts much?
That's another thing. I didn't want to mention it because you guys were talking about the trash coming through. They're gonna come about three in the morning one day when there's no traffic to put down those crosswalks so that people driving through the paint have shut down the whole thing. I don't think they're gonna bang like dumpsters.
There's some lights, I would imagine.
There'll probably be some lights and compressor for the paint gun and stuff. But I'm anticipating that shouldn't mess with anybody, obviously, right?
As opposed to doing it in the day when I, wait until the.
We can't, we can't shut down all the streets mainly if the street went out of town.
Is there any of that saw left over? That has to be inspected.
None left over, no.
None left.
They actually has back home with them.
Imagine that.
I did have a good meeting conversation with the gentleman today, Mr. Sneed, he was, uh, he was pointing to that.
You keep one of those.
What was he hammering you for?
Well, he was, he was telling me that the part that goes over towards Bryson Drive.
Yes.
There was this bridge to nowhere. Unfortunately, if he had stayed maybe forty-five seconds longer, he would have seen a lady with a stroller and her two kids walking along that said bridge to nowhere, so. I don't know, I felt vindicated there for a minute.
There's this one crazy guy keeps driving down his John Deere tractor too, right down the middle of it.
Is your pistol geared by the penicillin? Sure you did. Some don't get it around here, uh, down here.
He's about to.
So, uh, speaking of bridges, is that bridge that's been painted already?
It hasn't been painted. We're gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about, yeah.
Okay.
I'm hoping we can make that a school project, but I haven't talked to them about that exactly.
What's that?
Scout the.
Paying the guardrail for the, for the, for the, the guard railings for the.
On the school side down there, maybe?
Yeah. I, I would think something nice black and white would look pretty good, so.
It's actually dip galvanized right now and they say there's some kind of chemical gases in it that need to release, so they say not to paint it for several months. So, we talked about next school year, adding the school doing as a kind of.
What, what, painting it literally black and white, would that be some kind of foul or does it need to be orange? I'm, I'm literally asking.
No, you can paint it whatever color you want.
The original color was gonna be Louisiana Monroe, Monroe, you couldn't have that.
Yeah.
I will assure you.
You're gonna go and paint it orange, right?
Yeah, no. Oh, that's your business about down here.
I was thinking a nice centrally black and white would look good.
Yeah, I can agree. No, I'll get in about a little bit next, uh, for next school year. That year sets all year and then before we do school next year. Yeah. I'll probably handle that a little better. All right. So, actually we need a motion to approve that.
So.
Sorry.
I have a motion to approve the payments of progress, uh, invoices and payouts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Post, thank you. All right, and to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Century Link Sales Solutions Incorporated of Mansfield, Ohio to purchase an ABAI P office in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents. This is the phone to interact.
There would be a three hundred and fifty-one dollar annual recurring cost, which is pretty small for such a system. We'll have new phones and we'll have voice line and, you know, we'll be right up there in the twenty-first century.
Coffee?
And the phone system installed, I think accurately stated by the chief somewhere in the Carter administration will be retired.
Okay. Which is certainly a telephone, that's really the only thing I can operate. All right, Alderman Rogers, would you introduce us one please?
Bill number?
Twenty-one, twenty-four.
Move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-four be given its first reading by title only.
Sorry.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-one, twenty-four be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, continue please.
Move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Central Missouri to enter into an agreement with Century Link Sales Solutions Incorporated of Mansfield, Ohio to purchase an ABAI P office phone system and for such technical support as described in the agreement. Move the bill number twenty-one, twenty-four be given its second reading by title only.
Sorry.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-one, twenty-four be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, continue please.
Bill number twenty-one, twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Central Missouri to enter into an agreement with Century Link Sales Solutions Incorporated of Mansfield, Ohio to purchase an ABAI P office phone system and for such technical su- support as described in this agreement. Move that bill number twenty-one, twenty-four be adopted by a roll call vote.
Sorry.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-one, twenty-four be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, roll call vote please, head.
Alderman Laura.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Madley.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-one, twenty-four passes and now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-eight seventy-nine.
Twenty-eight seventy-nine. All right. Are there any old business or?
We can start asking your opinion down here. Actually, it's a sign, yeah.
Yes.
That's getting the name.
All right, uh, no business, new business. Only appointment I have in seeing is to make the committee to interview the city attorney packets that we advertised for a full-time city attorney, whether we contracted or employees. Not if they just keep the same committee that we had to interview the inter, and that's myself, Matt Carlin and David Rokans. So. All right.
Sorry.
I have a motion to second to keep the interview committee for the city attorney candidates the same as Dave Rokans, Matt Carlin and myself. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, all right. All right, Matt, you have anything?
Uh, real briefly, just the, uh, both of myself and the, um, staff at the, in Missouri Regional Police Commission are, um, very pleasantly surprised at how well the process is going so far. The committee members, some of them have met twice, almost all of them met once. Um, and I sent, I need to send you that, I can send, I sent the update memo to all the members of all the committees. I should have put that in the pack up tonight. But, uh, it's just, uh, I don't want to sound, I guess I'm not amazed, but I'm really pleased with not only the amount of participation, but the talent of the people and their ability to contribute to this community and I, I think we'll get a product that will be useful for many years to come. Thank you. And it won't sit on a shelf because there'll be at least thirty citizens out there who took place in it and are asking about it one time.
Any monthly report to the.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing I want to ask you. So, we're looking at a combined meeting that would be a chancellor of the public of this state on November fifteenth, which is a Tuesday meeting.
On November fifteenth, will public safety have works?
Uh, all four.
It would, it would be the comprehensive.
Oh, comprehensive, yeah, not the committees.
Committees, but not.
The comprehensive plan, not the standard two.
Still planning on a public safety on November seventh?
Yes.
That's wrong. You said the fourteenth, twenty-first.
Yeah. Public safety is the fourteen. Uh, General, uh, General Government said fourteen.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I thought you said.
Yeah.
And there's a, something going on November eighth, I think.
Yeah.
Goodbye.
Make sure you, go on, go, please. Okay. Anything, uh, special with your monthly report this month?
Um, it's all special. We're good. No, there's been nothing.
All right. All right, city attorney?
Alan. I'm spectating.
Okay.
He's scared to say anything because I don't James.
All right. Yeah, you have anything?
And Dawn too.
All right. Just, just out of curiosity, did you put the barbecue contest in concert?
The barbecue contest was, was on the, there was a link to the.
I did, I did share something about the barbecue contest, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. Any ad may arise?
I have two things.
Okay.
Uh, once again, our softball girls will return to Springfield for state championships.
Yes.
This, uh, this very weekend. They will be leaving on their buses, uh, from high school nine-thirty-ish, give or take Thursday morning. They'll need a police escort out of town, which I'm more than happy to do.
Uh, but, but you'll stop sure at Springfield, right? Probably.
If I might continue. Uh, football this Friday night here.
Cahoka.
As it is, what we see now, district play. First round, districts.
Cahoka here, Park County, here Friday evening. All right.
Um, did a little, this drug takeback thing is getting in the way of my social caliber for high school events, which is this Saturday, drug takeback.
Okay.
And that would be bringing them to, the, if people had drugs that they, they.
They fired drugs.
They fired drugs, they would bring them to.
Yes, here, here, I mean, we have Earl back there in evidence room. We take them all the time. It's not that, but it's the recognized day to do that.
When, when is that on Saturday, sir?
Saturday, eleven to two is your whenever.
Yes, sir.
If the girls play Saturday at one-thirty, the cutoff will be at one-thirty.
Probably one AM to about midnight, all day. One AM to about midnight.
What's that?
The drug takebacks, you probably up there all day, can't you?
Well, if I can't, I know someone that could be.
Right, well, thank you very much and, uh, please give our best wishes to the softball team and football.
We're very fortunate to have the caliber. Mission under strength, we do.
I've been listening to several of the games on the radio and they're announcing.
I think we'll beat that little kind of, I think so. The girls know what, twenty-seven and one?
Yep.
What are the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Post, all right.